From students wanting to know more about why the board does certain things, why administration essentially works the way it does. So we just want all students to have access to those answers. Okay, so the agenda for this month is pretty light. So I'm just gonna go over the agenda and then we'll open up for discussion. Okay, cool. These consent agenda items are regarding contracts and agreements for storage-based programs, designation of emeritus status, meaning retired faculty and staff, sabbatical leave recommendations, the appointment of Professor Hersberg to the Comcast Chair for cybersecurity innovation in the School of Engineering, and then we are also adding a Bachelor of Arts in the School of Fine Arts. So it's literally a Bachelor of Art for undergrads.
Interesting.
Then we'll have a presence report, academic affairs report. We're adding a Bachelor of Science in Computer Science at the Stanford campus. So that's actually, I believe, the first bachelor's degree to be completed in Stanford alone. So that's kind of like a first signal towards having regional campuses be full, complete universities. Then we'll have financial affairs report, as per camera policies. We're approving of the final project budget for the UConn bookstore in downtown Hartford. We'll have UConn Health Report, Joint Audit and Compliance Committee Report, the HEE Building and Grounds and Environment Committee Report, Construction Management Oversight Report, a student life report, institutional advancement committee report, committee on compensation report. Then we'll have other business, executive session, and then insurance note. And again, it's a very light agenda, which is kind of ironic because the budget just passed. So you would think you'd have a very heavy agenda, but it's light for this one. Does anybody have any specific questions?
Yeah, I got one. What was the thing about the UConn bookstore in downtown Hartford? Tell me more about that.
Right, so we're essentially approving of a revised final budget of 1.31 million for construction services related to a new retail facility downtown Hartford, which will essentially be a bookstore that we have in stores. So it'll be like a bookstore and a cafe. So we'll be using university funds provided from the guaranteed warrants and nobles revenue for the construction of the new bookstore.
That space already exists though, right? So we're just paying off stuff that's already been taken care of?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
And then our portion is, like I said, 1.831 million. It costs 3.5 million, but I think it's good. It's a good deal for us.
Cool.
So, does anybody have any other questions about the agenda? I know it's really light. I feel bad. Some people are probably confused about where we are. Any other specific questions at all?
Yeah, one for me too. Going to the budget, which is not on the agenda. Legislature is looking at cutting 130 million or so from the university budget in the next, in the biennial. And we don't know yet if the governor's going to sign it, but assuming either he signs it or he vetoes it and the House overrides the veto, which is very, very likely. What would be first on the chopping block for the board as far as cuts go with an extra 30 million in unexpected losses?
I believe the number is, I don't know, I don't have any idea. I believe the mark number is 143 million.
No, either way.
And of course, that's still about 100 million. It's a good amount more than we had expected from 100 million. But first, we'd be cutting expenses before raising revenues. So we would do everything possible before increasing fees and tuition for students, especially with the 31% increase already in place. And also, cutting any regional, shutting down any regionals with the amount that we're being cut by the CGI is very unlikely. So that's another reason why I really wanted to have the town hall and to have you guys here, just to verify with you guys that is very, very unlikely. So Karz, can you speak to how your regional campus is responding to all of this? What their thoughts are, how we can help?
Yes. Yeah, so our students have been calming down from the first frantic since the rally. You know, we had a lot of tears and a lot of emotional kind of wreckage when we got the first phone news and that email from Susan. But after everything and seeing that, you know, we made a debt in that original 300 million, you know, I did assure them that our differences, they, based on the information you provided on the group chat, but everything, you know, there is a slight worry, but it's not as bad as it was. I think a lot of students did take action in reaching out to their senators, which was very helpful in our case.
Right, right. So when we had the rally in stores, we basically told the regionals, you know, have your own rallies or come to stores, which a lot of them did. And then after that, we had as many regional students as possible. And the ASGs were a huge part of this as far as educating their campuses and encouraging students to call their legislators. So we got a lot of support regarding that and that was, that did a lot of good stuff. And we got a few responses back from legislators, which is cool. But yeah, cutting expenses would definitely be first. I know that a lot of students are concerned. Damon wanted me to bring this up. He has a thing right now. But he was concerned about tuition increasing and fees increasing. But with, again, with the cuts that happened and since it's not gonna be around 270, 390, however you wanna cut it, the likelihood of revenues having to increase off of students in that way will most likely not happen within the next academic year. So we should be good. Although we had to get a final word from Scott Jordan. He went through the 881-page document and he has an absolute champ for that. He goes to the end of the earth to make sure that UConn is, UConn has its finances in order. But because of that, we have to wait for him to get back to us. Does anybody have any other major concerns or ideas that they would want me to bring to the board? And that is what this really is about, having students express themselves so that...
So, um... A lot of our students at the Waterbury campus just have another major concern is that classes keep decreasing here and they're having to travel a lot more to stores in Hartford or wherever it is that they're going. And we understand that that's likely for the upper-level courses. But for the general ads, a lot of students have found that they can't take them here or they conflict too much with the other gen ads that they need to take. So that's one of the big concerns that we've been seeing lately.
Right, right. So that's because of the decreasing faculty-to-student ratio. So that's one of the issues with these types of budget cuts, right? So one of the things that we would want to do is we'd want to decrease expenses moving forward. And part of that, if you guys remember the email from President Hempst, one of the things that we'd want to do is we'd want to have a hiring freeze. And so that decreases the number of staff available to teach, to teach classes. So that makes it harder for students to get into classes, especially general education classes. So, you know, sometimes, I don't know if any of you have experienced this, but it's, you'll have a class that you really need, but you can't get into. And so then you have to enroll in it in the next semester, the semester after that. And that can prolong your degree and increases the cost of coming to UConn because that might mean you might not be able to graduate as early as you want to. Or it might mean that you'd have to stay an extra semester or so. So that's something important, but it's because of our budget issues. And especially because there were limited state fund out a lot, so I'm done with it.
So we're not necessarily losing faculty in the midst of all this, are we? Or is that not the case?
Well, that is tricky. Sorry, do you even have?
I think we are, because Scott Jordan said that we're already in the midst of a hiring freeze.
A hiring freeze, in all fairness though, a hiring freeze doesn't necessarily mean, like, you know, cutting faculty.
No, he didn't say that. Basically, there's like a-
Do you want to echo or arrest that brand gender stuff? Sorry.
Oh, it's okay, yeah.
I'm so sorry, guys. I know what I'm doing. Oh god, I want to record.
You mentioned there's like about a thousand person turnover every year. And every year, they recently started a hiring freeze. I don't know what it was. But if that's the case, I'm assuming that we're losing faculty. Maybe not all, the thousand probably isn't all come from faculty. We're definitely losing some faculty.
It's mainly attrition, but because of the, well, we are locked, UConn is locked into UConn tracks. So like the P and the unions, it kind of like locks in our expenses, so that's a huge part of it. Yeah, but the thing is with the unions, we're locked into contracts such that they can't fire anyone, but they can't really hire anyone. But people who aren't in those unions, which are mostly not professors, those guys turn over a lot. But Josh was in a meeting with Scott Jordan and he talked about the future of UConn and talked a little bit about construction. Did you want to speak to that at all?
I mean, they're being responsible about it. Like, they're delaying a lot of construction. Also, a few things they mentioned are like, they were preparing for about 100 million budget cut, like, just to be physically responsible. Like, obviously, they can expect a 300, even 145 million. So a lot of the cutting has already been done in advance, like, as a private measure. And so the 43 million wasn't part of this. So they're gonna have to make some extra cuts in order to cover that. And one of the questions that- You brought it, actually. You told me before we met with them, like, what would be the first thing to get cut? And so you said this item, this something that's already been cut, would be an increase in tuition, which hopefully wouldn't get applied until the next academic year. So there wouldn't be like a mid-year increase as well as a higher increase of, kind of, not a firing, buying freeze, but like they just stop buying unnecessary things. And that's pretty much all I had from that. He spent a lot more about it, just a little main points.
Okay.
Yeah, we might have to postpone the science buildings. The ones that are supposed to be built in the parking lot cross from the science building. That's already goodbye. What's it called?
Yeah, you're talking about the lots that were crossed from Teds and Old Huskies, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We might have to prolong that. The thing about construction though, that was a big question from students. Because a lot of people were asking, okay, so why are we spending so much on construction if we're so much in debt, where we have such limited revenues? And the thing is, is that construction expenses are agreed upon with the state government at the beginning of the year. And then we're debt-financed those through supplemental indentures and bonds for the remainder of the fiscal year. So there's not much we can do about it now. And that's the big reason why administration was saying, well, this is a very difficult situation for us to be in because we're still late in the game.
And also, like, one thing a lot of students don't know is that the roads, any road reconstruction or like repairs, road construction isn't from the UConn's budget, it's from the state. Like he said, it's like a nice gift almost, which would be like, and a lot of times the maintenance or repairs for like piping stuff isn't optional because it's deferred, because it's deferred maintenance, we have to, like, we can't just maintain it with bonds because you can't do that. So when something does break at a severe level, we have to fix it or replace it. And so that's when, that's deferred maintenance and that's when we have to use our own, like, funding to, or bonds to pay for that. So it's not really like a time, we can't like choose when sometimes, so it's just a timing thing right now.
So North Eagleville Road is not a UConn project, it's a state project, and it is getting done, right?
I'm not sure what's being done, but you do know, sorry.
Okay, I was just using it as like an example.
I think I hear a solid answer.
But I did read a story from UConn today saying that North Eagleville Road would be, the schedule is being extended and postponed, like the completion deadline is being postponed. But because, but an extra 43 million isn't gonna, you know, create a perpetual construction project and make the road one-way for decades because university can't manage money or whatever. But, but yeah, just, you know, just as long as, you know, it gets fixed. Because, like, people that live in north and northwest, like, they absolutely despise the sound of jackhammers and, you know, big diggers. I don't know what those things are called. They despise the sound of that, especially at like, you know, 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 p.m. When, you know, a lot of them are either trying to study or sleep.
I know, it's like solely on weekends either, either on weekends.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Delivery drivers get them too.
I don't blame them.
The thing about like UConn 2000 and most of our construction projects is they're part of our capital budget, not our operating budget. So meaning they're not funded by student dollars, right, student tuition. So it doesn't affect our tuition after the day. So I know a lot of students are concerned about that. But no matter how much construction we do, it is not gonna affect our tuition. So that's something that was a big concern. I think Freddie had a concern as well.
Matter of fact, I do have, I do have one question related to North Eagleville Road, kind of. Transportation just announced that the red line has come back today and I saw a red line bus going down Glenbrook Road, which is just a very welcome sign for anybody that parks in W lot. I don't know where you park, Josh, but-
X lot.
X lot, okay. But, you know, for people that park in C lot and people that live in like Busby Hill and, you know, they park in J lot next to the tech park or whatever, I can tell you just, you know, based on my experience that nobody likes the way the green line works right now. The whole going up Busby Hill thing, just, it adds an unnecessary amount of time onto an already long enough commute for some people. I happen to have met a fellow half an hour commuter today when we were talking about power outages, Hebron. And the inlet green line starts at C lot, goes up to Busby, stops, and then goes to Charter Oak, comes back down, goes to J lot, makes a stop in front of the tech park, then stops at the tennis courts, which, you know, that's probably the best spot to get on it. But then, instead of going straight to campus, finishing up Discovery Drive, it turns into Central Warehouses, goes through F lot, then goes to L lot, which is next to X lot, and then finally ends up on Hillside. So that literally adds an extra 15, 20 minutes onto an already long enough commute.
It's really tough to one bus line.
Right, and the fact that they were able to bring red line back for people that live in like Towers Husky Village and W lot commuters is good. But I think that, I think that I speak for a lot of people when I say we want yellow line back. Because yellow line is basically the express route for people that like park in C lot and just want to get to campus. If yellow line comes back, then it's just C lot, tennis courts, foundation, skipping like everything else.
I think L should be part of that.
Yeah, so yellow, yellow should come back. And I don't know who you would talk to about that, but like, if they can bring red line back, they can bring yellow back. If North Eagleville was the concern, because they, they made it so... What happened with the construction was they made the entrance to North Eagleville on 195. They made it so like you couldn't turn in, but if you were leaving, then you could come out. They recently got rid of the stones that separated left-turning traffic on North Eagleville from going on Glenbrook, which is why they were able to bring red line back. If they can do that for red line, they can do that for yellow line and make the buses go back to normal.
What does red line have that yellow line doesn't? I'm not familiar with the bus routes.
Oh, I don't know bus routes either. But I was gonna say, because I'm not familiar with bus routes, I'm more just like community in general. Definitely bring that to the soon-to-be-formed transportation committee that Scott Jordan is hopefully forming.
Scott Jordan's forming?
Yeah.
Well, that's the parking lot.
Well, he called it transportation.
Scott Jordan's forming a transportation committee, thank god.
Yeah, because I remember mentioning it back, I think a month or two ago, she said, yeah, they're gonna work on some sort of parking committee, wait till a bunch of stuff is done and like approved, so we can start working on it. And at our meeting, he said, I brought it up, he mentioned the transportation committee. So I think it's probably welcome everyone.
I will absolutely join, and like, I don't care what gets in the way, I'm going to that. But the difference between blue and red line, starting from W lot, which is like next to Husky Village, it goes to W lot and Towers, which, you know, both of them go the same way. But at North Eagleville Road at 195 is where it changes. Blue line continues down 195, stopping at East and Buckley Shippey, going southbound, and then turns onto Mansfield Road, stops at Arhona, Alumni, and West, and then ends up on Hillside, where it stops at the Union. Red line is different because it's an easier way to the Union for people that come from the Towers Hill. So W lot Towers, and then it turns onto North Eagleville, and then it ends up on Glenbrook, where it stops at Health Services. And I don't think that there's a stop in engineering anymore since, you know, since westbound traffic on Glenbrook was like basically stopped and you couldn't have buses go that way. But they had a Health Services stop and then would make a left and stop at the Union. So red line is easier for people that are coming from, you know, top to hill.
Is the Union the destination of all lines?
Union is a destination on, technically, all the lines, yes. Green line is, well, actually, yes, it is a stop for all lines, just kind of the hub a little bit.
I'm really not familiar. I just thought it was cool because I saw the app and like the bus number. I'm like, that's sick.
Yeah, so, um...
But I like driving, so.
Yeah, I, well, I don't, I don't, because I do it every day, but that's beside the point.
It can be snow glass, yeah. That's a lot of driving.
It is.
Over the course of a year?
Problem with green line, the problem with green line, since it kind of stops at the Union and also doesn't, is that it doesn't continue up to the stop that's next to the Fieldhouse, which is on the other side of Hillside, which basically is the Union. But like, the Union stop, like, does-
Probably boring Corales.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Corales. Like, all this discussion of bus lines and all this crap, like, you don't care about that.
Oh, we'll bring this discussion later and then see what he says.
Can we talk about red halls if you want?
Yeah, if anybody has any like specific concerns. But yeah, I'll bring this to Scott Jordan.
Alright, cool, cool, cool.
He fixes everything. Avery Point had potholes that were bothering its students. And so, sorry, brought that to me, so I brought it to Scott Jordan. And Scott Jordan had those filled in like a week. He's like, he really is. Scott Jordan's our CFO, if any of you don't know.
Scott Jordan's the president. Did somebody say something?
Yeah, he's the best. He's super open to students too, which is fabulous. Okay, so does anybody have any specific concerns about, like, the budget or fees? Anything like that, because remember that the final decision is by the board regarding those things. So I'm more than happy to bring any concerns to Tom Hooger or Scott or anyone, really.
I got nothing at this point. I think I've said my piece.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your contributions.
Has the board gotten any of the recent legislation that was written in USG? Did they get those? I don't even know.
What do you mean?
I think, what was last in the board, Matt?
Last month.
I think mid-month.
It was right after our meeting.
Their meeting began on Wednesday, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's Wednesday. Actually, the next meeting should be a big one because that's the one where we're gonna react to the budget. So any reforms that have to be made to the budget will be happening December 13th, most likely.
I watched Capital Report yesterday on WTNH and somebody, I think it was Jennifer Snyder, who's the communications director for CIU 1199, said that a budget decision from the governor has to be made by Wednesday.
Ironically.
So he'll either sign it or veto it by Wednesday, but, you know...
They're prepared to override, right?
Yeah, they, no, the, both the House and the Senate passed the budget with veto-proof majorities. I'm just, I'm just gonna check, see if anything happened. No, nothing happened. So we still haven't heard anything about the budget yet.
I don't understand why you guys have that, but if it doesn't matter, what does, if you want it?
But yeah, so the next one will hopefully-
Where is it?
The board meeting? Room 112 slash 113, our next one. You should come, Josh.
I want to see last time. I just forgot for some reason.
You both should come.
What's the, what time will the board be meeting?
9:30 a.m.
9:30, okay.
Well, financial affairs starts at 9:00.
Well, I...
Yeah, that's another reason why I wanted everything on work. Academic begins at 9:00, financial affairs at 15:00, and then the final, the actual board trustees meeting starts at 9:30.
I, since my class, since my class starts at 11:15 and I don't have anything going on tomorrow night, I'll be sure to get to bed early so that I can get up, put some nice clothes on, and then show up for the meeting. And my classes doesn't start till 11:15.
You guys don't have to, by the way, of course.
I'm gonna be in two hours, I just forgot.
It's, it's good to pay the board a visit once in a while.
Yeah, and I definitely would encourage all students to come to the board meetings. The trustees love to stay students there. Really, it's, and it's an important time for UConn, so...
You said it's this Wednesday, right?
Yes, this Wednesday.
Scott probably be there.
Oh, Scott's always there.
Yes, okay.
We could all hang out with Scott after.
Yeah, when he's, when he's not in exec session.
He isn't in executive session because he's not a trustee yet.
Oh, okay, alright.
Joel's there, the president's there, Chairman McHugh's there.
You're there.
Yeah, I'm there. Kevin's there. Kevin Badwell, the graduate trustee.
Oh, I never know him briefly.
So all cool people are there, guys. So Karz, are there any issues on your campus that we should know about or that we can work on?
For the most part, campus is pretty good. The only issue that we're having is that Starbucks is in open end and they said that should be done by November. So hopefully, fingers crossed, that works out. But other than what I mentioned, no. I think it's really good that, you know, we're included in this kind of thing. We're having a town hall on Monday and I just want to bring this kind of sense of security and detail on the ASG senators to pass it along to their constituents and just make sure that everyone feels like calm about the situation now. But we definitely want them to know that you guys are doing this effort and including us because it's important. You know, in the past, this is my whole year in ASG and in the past, decisions have been made without any type of consultation. And that really kind of just makes students mad, to be honest. So I'm happy that we're seeing this change and I do appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. I think that it's been important to keep open communication, especially with the regionals, and that's why I continue this. Even though I hate being recorded and being a public guy, but I think that, you know, last year allows students to appreciate it to have a forum and a connection to the board. And so that's why I'm doing this, so.
See, you're doing your job. You're doing well.
Thank you, Michael. Michael tries to reassure me.
I was gonna ask you, have you been visiting campuses?
Yes, I have. Do you want to come?
Yes. But I want to also ask-
Yay!
So is that Starbucks she's talking about, like, in the new building?
Yeah, she is in Waterbury. She's the president of Waterbury ASG. And Hartford is going through the same thing with their bookstore and cafe.
Didn't they have-
Yeah, so they built the, the building across the street at 15th and 16th Avenue because we had some incidents during downtown. But I think that over time, as kind of students keep coming, like, the older students, they don't care for the building, newer students are like fascinated. So, you know, it's just a little bit of getting to that point where we can hopefully have that, that building open as well as we have this one.
That's the, that's the building that's across the street from like the main academic building, right?
It's called, they call it Directory Building.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I met with Joe DiLorenzo last fall and I got a chance to like look around the campus and I saw that they were doing something across the street.
Nice.
Yeah, so the building is open just on the surface, all we're waiting for.
Cool.
Yeah, and just to update you guys, you know, we're v-... Nice, um, yeah, and just to update you guys, you know, moving forward, if anyone has or if anyone hears from constituents that there are any questions about the budget, feel free to reach out. Um, if anyone wants a meeting with Scott Jordan or anyone like that, let me know. Um, some of the things that we're working on is creating a website for people to submit questions um to the student trustees, just so it's a little easier um for students to access us. Um, we're working on having uh like student trustee emails, just so it's a little bit more professional. Um, and we're working on getting um disabled students. So do you guys know that that is this way in front of McMahon or wheelchair bound?
Yes.
Okay, so apparently we've heard from disabled students that snow is dumped on there during the winter months.
From the root.
Um, just from plowing. Yeah, so that's something that I guess hasn't gotten a lot of attention, so we're gonna be trying to prevent it now for each year. Um, and also, Corrales, this is something I mentioned in the group A. Um, so apparently a lot of regional students, when they transfer to stores, they have academic issues, they essentially shut down, they don't get involved, and that those are not all regional students, of course. Um, but according to Connect Statistically, that's that's a lot of regional students. So we're gonna be working on having welcome back events, um, programs that help those students get more involved. Um, Mark, I think you're from, I think you're from Regional, right? Different market?
Yeah.
What kind of resources were available to you?
Um, not many, because like I basically just all the essentials, like quick and welcome, orientation. There was a very brief orientation at the Harvard campus, so it wasn't, it was far like canvas and it wasn't that helpful, so I was pretty much lost aside from the fact that I had left here. So I had, that's my advantage, but I can't imagine how difficult it could be for a normal normal student came here. Um, but to add for transitioning, I actually have an initiative I'm working on, if I could share.
Yeah, of course.
So within USG, I might mention it to you, I don't remember, I've been around, called I'm calling it the Husky Ears, which Ears stands for Extracurricular Activity Improvement Survey. Um, and essentially, I wanna, I want to address the problem of students being disconnected from clubs and organizations and certain events because that seems to be a problem. There's over seven hundred clubs here or around seven hundred clubs and it's decreasing every year and.
And like the only opportunity that anybody gets to see all of them at the same time is the Open Fair.
Right, which I think is ineffective because there's flying forward to plus tables and there's no way you can go into every single table and find out what they're really about.
Yeah.
Um, so those are a bunch of issues and so my suggestion is to create this extensive electronic two-way matchmaking system, like program that can be presented in like F Y E courses um through just mass freshman or new student emails. And it'll put a bunch of different criteria, so it is, it's essentially a matchmaking program that'll connect students to organizations. Um, they'll both play both sides of the form so they can get personalized results. And once all students fill out, like I'm hoping it'd be like a class-wide thing that gets filled out at the beginning every year. Once it's filled out though, it'll essentially serve as a database where organizations can search for prospective new members and such and contact them directly.
So would it be an entire new software, um, from like UConn Touch and Student Activities?
Yeah.
It's basically.
So it'd be like an algorithmic type thing?
Yeah, I'm working with it now, like because it's a science major.
You just haven't found the time for it and I honestly haven't either.
I just had the. Idea.
Also, it'd be it'd be proprietary, made basically by USG.
Yeah.
And like my idea was like
impressive.
So, a Roman, but like, say we were to go to Costco or something, would you be able to share with like other organizations, like
Yeah.
have a thumb drive out or something, just like, you know, to share with them or even regional campuses.
I didn't say anything.
I know you did. And something like that.
And I think it's important to get USG involved with the regional ASGs, especially before the transition. Um, I know that's caused me a lifelong friendship, if you will, um, before and I think it's a good resource for the ASGs to have. Um, and I think you need some type of mentorship when they come here because you really wanna improve the statistics of retention and academic achievement among regional transfers. Um, and of course, that'll be a long-term project, um, but I think that's important, we start now. So, because a lot of students are suffering.
I I think.
Yeah.
Um, like important thing to kind of incorporate is that the students who are transferring in don't get any any kind of um support until they're ready to transfer versus kind of starting an initiative where, you know, they have the opportunity to go in through like the semester before, like every month maybe and kind of see how things are set up. Um, kind of like a a different type of orientation, I would say. Um, where it's a little longer term than just like the week before classes or the week that classes started because that's when everything happened and that's when we're all promoted and like I chose not to go to stores, um, for many reasons, that being one of them. But it's just I can see students getting into that anxiety that, you know, classes are starting. I, how do I make sure I know where my classes are and still get involved, like it's just too much condensed into a short period of time.
Okay, so you're saying, uh, we should find a solution so that regional students are able to test the waters, kind of? Essentially?
In a in a sense, it like a lot of students know right off the bat that they're transferring because they know their majors. Like I was able to switch my major in time because I was political science. I changed into urban because urban had been finished here, but now every student has that option. Um, especially with the sciences and what they definitely have to go up there.
Right, right. So do you think that, you know, there not being enough guidance beforehand? Um, do you think that's deterring students from transferring here?
I don't think it's deterring them, I think it it is a fact in many cases or, um, because those still go regardless, um, but sometimes that can make it a break in for them, um, them not being prepared for the change.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest things we need to do as a stores campus uh is helping regional students feel more welcome here. Um, especially since we're so so large and there are so many strong organizations and our academics are very different here. Um, and and so I think that there definitely needs to be a change in the.
Same goes for just people that are just coming from another college anyway.
Yeah.
Or a small town.
I kind of went through the same thing myself when I transferred in from M C C, like I really wanted to like get involved and do all sorts of stuff and orientation was alright, but it wasn't like orientation plus to plus like being here for as little of amount of time as I've been, it doesn't feel the same as when you come in as a freshman and then you stay for all four plus years. Like it's 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 a very different and it can be a very challenging thing to couple that with, couple that with a long commute, you know, not living anywhere near campus and you can and you can feel really disconnected in your first semester or two.
It's hard to like meet people first of all and not having and having to like do it on your own because of that, it's not much harder.
Yeah.
Like I probably had this closer and ideal transfer like situation as I could have, just because like I went to U S B and I have I had a bunch of friends who already went here and I know the campus very well, but I still felt like very it was very, yeah, it was it was difficult, definitely.
You felt like a bit of fish out of water?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
I did too. I mean, I I didn't come from another university or college, but I came from a very small town. So my first semester was very random, I had, um, so I definitely understand.
You had an orientation?
Yeah, there's a well, for transfer students, I don't I don't know if it applies to regional students, but um to students from regional campuses, but um if you transfer in from another college, like you know, you went to community college, you got a degree or you were at a university, you didn't like it and you decided to go to UConn instead. Um, they have like a one-day-long orientation that and they do those usually on Wednesdays in the summer and that lasts a day, you don't like stay over or anything like that, but you they also do that um in the winter. I don't know if people stay over in the winter because, you know, it's the winter, but um but yeah, you show up like pretty early in the morning, actually. Um, most of it happens in Laurel, you get to you get to like talk to some orientation people and then, you know, C L A S shows up and they give you like a whole bunch of information about um stuff related to the college and things like that and it's it was pretty informative and I enjoyed it, but it didn't feel too much like I was getting, you know, everything that I wanted to know, needed to know as far as, you know, just jumping straight in and, you know, fully immersing myself a hundred percent.
I don't think one day I can really do that on this.
Yeah, and which which is why I kind of envy, um, you know, fresh like to-be freshmen that, you know, they they do it the normal way unlike I did.
When I was at Harvard, I actually like sketched out and planned out like uh um like a transfer certain orientation, but I completely forgot it, it's probably gone now. Like I I wrote it down, I think it was at the Harvard campus. About ten minutes.
There you go.
Because like, as far as I know, there wasn't anything for that. I think I didn't even know about the transfer student um orientation.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna go to like the orientation office and they can tell you all about it.
Yeah, like, um, really, the campus students don't even have that, like because like they're not transfer students per se.
Yeah, yeah, I I I could understand that, which 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 is which is why I like, at that point, I would kind of wanna recommend, you know, why not make the push for transfer student orienta- or or actually add regional campus students into transfer student orientation.
Yeah.
Well, it's something we can write on.
Yeah.
I know Chris Dune and I and you guys want to help, we're thinking of um welcome back events for regional students only, um, so that they can meet each other and integrate. Um, anyway, it helped make their transition easier.
Yeah.
Um, but you guys seem to be very knowledgeable about that in front of you two, I think you would be interested in that.
Yeah.
Um.
That's that's something we should all work on.
Yeah. Pretty super interesting. Um, okay, so I'm just gonna go over some of the key parts of the agenda, um. Just because, um, we missed that. Okay, so, um, I guess, yeah.
I have to go, I'm finally, you know, I have to go because I have class at six.
Okay.
So, um, I do appreciate this, thank you so much, feel me on anything else I might need to know.
Yeah, of course, and we'll keep in contact, so, thank you, Corrales. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Um, so I'm just gonna briefly go over some more important agenda items. Um, the first one is that we're adding a Bachelor of Arts in Art in the School of Fine Arts. Um, the second one is that we're adding a Bachelor of Science in Computer Science at the Stanford campus. And so that is um pretty important because that means people at regional campuses can actually finish um a degree in in the sciences and I was talking to Tom Kruger about it. Um, and we both agreed that it's, um, it's positive progression towards having regional campuses, um, being places where students can complete um full science degrees. And so hopefully that'll expand to Hartford and to Waterbury and Avery Point. Um, we will vote on the revised project budget for the UConn bookstore in downtown Hartford. We approve of some procurement policies. Um, and then we'll have a UConn Foundation report and our foundation is doing pretty well. Um, and so we'll have the specifics on that, we'll go over that in a minute. So, again, I'm so sorry for the last, and thank you for getting through. Uh, I'm so sorry for the um, the room change last minute. We were supposed to have the S O C conference room again, um, but Academic Affairs is meeting in there, so we had to uh make some adjustments.
What you can do.
Yeah, that's that's how life goes, um, that's okay. Um, thank you guys for coming, by the way, I'm sorry that this is kind of a different situation, but um but thank you for taking the time to your days. Um, does anybody else have any last questions or comments?
I'm good here.
Thank you, guys.